Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next on the list is Mickey Schneider. About right.
Hi, I'm Mickey Schneider. I'm here as a citizen in regards to my son. Most of you know that my youngest son Jeremy is a Marine, and he is now stationed this time in Afghanistan. He is also in the heaviest fighting area of the country, unfortunately, and he's made a request that I'm passing on to the citizens of Eureka for singing fish. Remember those bubba bass or whatever they are?
Yeah.
He's made a request for one of these. I don't have those kind of things. When he was in Iraq, I sent him a singing moose, which was quite effective, but he really, really, really would like singing fish. I believe it's mostly to keep their spirits up. It would go on the outside of their tents and their buildings. When people walk by, these little suckers go off, and it's, it livens their day, shall we say, especially since working 12-hour days. I would like to see a whole lot of these donated or loaned, either way. I would love to be able to ship one or two dozen to them. They would have a lot of fun from a mother's perspective. I dare a sniper to try to get in there with these things all over. I mean, really, this is how we have to look at it, but if anybody would like to donate any of these, my T-shirt shop is right across the street, next to Main Street Cafe, by Babes and Blades. Any of those three places would take them, but I would sure appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mitch. Okay. And I don't know how to, I can't read this last name. Looks like something Farquhar.
Susan.
Oh, Susan, okay. You just said Susan. I knew who it was.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Unfortunately, you guys probably aren't aware, the city had a request this afternoon for a carriage company to come into town. I don't know exact words that were said, but apparently he's made some pretty stiff comments and so on. I just want to let the council know that we're here to answer any questions if we can help you all if this topic comes up. I am aware that there's a third route available and ready to go, and that, I don't know if this company's looked into that or not, but they're also trying to use some scare tactics, I think, and I'm just here to encourage you not to let him, let them scare you. I don't want to quote, but I think he thinks that he's going to just kind of run on the state highway because we can't keep him off of it. That's fine and dandy, but at some point, he is going to have to get off onto the road somewhere off of the state highway to either turn around or load and unload customers. So at that point, it does become the city's issue whether it's, I mean, unless it's on private property, which, you know, which is still in city limits. So at some point, I'm sure you all have to do lots of research on it, and if we can help you all with any, anything anyway, we're here for you.
Questions?
No questions.
Okay. Settle in public comments. Unfinished business. Next on the agenda, number one, discussion ordinance to amend parks enabling. Apparently, the states has been postponed until September the 15th. Is that still a wish of the council?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll go to number two, the FOI workshop date.
We'll discuss.
Second?
Second.
Okay. I spoke with Mr. Hayes today. He has apparently been swamped to the point that he is asking the council, I believe I forwarded that to everybody's email, about setting a date on a Friday evening or a Saturday morning. I think Mr. Berry's already responded with his, so if you want to send me an email, I'll forward them on to him, or you can forward them direct to him, whichever you all prefer, and he'll make up his mind which one he can fit into his schedule. Any further on that? Yes.
Is there any timeframe that he's looking at with the Friday or Saturday?
He said Friday evening.
No, but I mean, within, within the upcoming month or a month from now?
He didn't say that. He said you all can talk to him if you want to talk to him. Mr. Berry?
Did he say how long this would be?
No, he didn't. He's, he's been chasing elephants, I guess, with the floss water.
Has this gone out to all the others that we recommended attend also?
No, of course it hasn't been said yet.
Okay. As far as their availability?
Once we get a firm date and, and he can get it worked into his schedule, then we'll put it out. We'll give everybody a heads up on it. Okay? Welcome, Mr. Weaver. Let's get caught in traffic.
It was slow.
Okay.
You gotta pay the late penalty.
All right. Deer hunt?
Discuss.
Second? Okay. I did attempt contact with Mr. White several times. Finally was forwarded to a Jeff Smith, who is now the current resident, or president of the Arkansas Bowhunting Association. He said Mr. White has, has stepped down and he is taking it over. He said he will send me an email in response to all the questions that I was given. He said it's probably going to be too late in the season to do a scheduled hunt now, but he'd be more than glad to try to set up one for next year.
A scheduled hunt?
The, the hunt that, that everybody voted on. Mr. Berry?
I talked to Mr. Smith also, and what I would like to do, if it's the wishes of the council, is I know we have a date, and we also had a conflict, possible conflict of a possible, with that date that we had, and there's a lot of other concerns, and we're talking with Jeff Smith. He seemed to feel, and I tend to agree with him since he's kind of the expert, he's done, he puts on these qualifications for the bow hunters, and he's the one that handles the one down in Heber Springs and Hot Springs and all those other places, and he suggested that, and made note that the qualified bow hunters usually have their hunts already planned out for the cities that have urban hunts. There's seven cities in the state of Arkansas right now that have urban hunts, and most hunters have that scheduled into their vacation time and into their time that they are going to be able to attend. What I would like to propose is, again, for us to, I guess, cancel the five-day hunt that we had scheduled and noted in December or into November, into first of December, and actually put this off until, for almost a year, to allow us adequate time to have him come up, do the qualifications, make presentations, and for us to establish areas for hunting, to be able to have our rules and regulations down so we can get a lot of the concerns of the citizens taken care of. Mr. Smith said, now he's been doing this since, I believe, 2002, which would be almost 10 years, and they've never had any problems with any of their hunts, and a lot of that is because of good planning, and I'm, as Mr. Pinnell is probably well aware of good planning, I think that's a very important thing in here, especially with this type of situation. And so he seemed to think that if we could go ahead, he would be glad also, Mayor, if you want to schedule a time for him to also to come up and visit with the council.
Mm-hmm.
He does live south of Little Rock, so it would take him, you know, we'd have to schedule this in quite a ways in advance for him, but the point is, if it's the wishes of the council to go ahead and, based on what I'm saying, is defer this for a year, well, for a year until at least December, January of either 2012, January 2013, which would basically be a year from when we were doing this. I think we would have a much better success and also be able to notify the public and help them take care of a lot of their concerns on there, so.
Mr. Penna?
This, this is a tough one, because I've gotten both, both sides, and I think my colleague to my right makes a good recommendation. The only thing that I'd like to see us do, based on what not only has been in the press, but what the input has been, is that some people feel like that they might have voted differently if the way we were headed was the way we continued. I'd like to see that delayed, and following the way the vote went was basically that it was a one-time, clarifying what a one-time bow and arrow hunt is, according to the regulations promulgated and time set by the Arkansas Game and Fish within the areas prescribed in their constitutional authority to regulate. I think if we can do that, I don't think we're going to have a trouble, you know, with the long-range planning and following the rules.
Okay. Want to make that into a motion? Mr. Berry?
Well, I'm a little-
I don't think anything's set in concrete right now. Still kind of in the question phase.
Absolutely. I'm a little confused about what Mr. Pinnell was talking about, to a certain extent. I mean, I could make a motion, but I, I'm not sure. I'm trying to, to frame it in my head. What I would like to do is to postpone, I guess, no, wait a minute, it's basically, well, I'd like to defer the hunt that we had scheduled to sometime in late winter of December, a date to be established later on after we have the people come up and have these rules and regulations established. I'm not sure how to make that into a motion.
You wanting the class to happen this year, or you want to have it enforced this in another year?
No, it's, it won't happen until next year.
Okay.
From what I'm understanding, we're too late, we're too late to end up having a class. We may not even be able to have a class in Eureka Springs, but at least we could have everything established. He says if we have these things established by March, most of the hunts were established for the urban hunts by March of this year, and that gave the hunters time enough to go ahead and plan their activities and schedule their certifications that they needed. So I don't want to, I guess what I'm, what I'm, I'm not sure about is Mr. Pinnell, when he talks about the one-time hunt, or where that is leading us.
Russell?
Yeah, I was talking to a bow, a member of the association the other day, and he said most of the places where they have these urban management hunts, that, that it's required about every three years, they come back and do it again. It has a continuing thing. They do an inventory to see how many deer you need to take from an area, and my, this is a long-term problem. This is a, we need an urban management plan. Maybe in that time between now and the hunt, we could integrate that into a, a committee or something that would, uh, Game and Fish has excellent plans for long-range urban deer management. Maybe we could integrate all that. But these guys are professionals. I mean, the proficiency tests are pretty impressive, really.
Okay. Mr. Penna?
Well, I'm, I was just asking that we ensure, based on the input I've gotten, that there's some, some people that felt when they voted that it was going to be a one-day hunt, and then all of a sudden, we were discussing at the table, and now we're taking the, the heat for extending it to a five-day. I, I concur that we ought to postpone it or cancel it, whatever the right verbiage would be, at this point in time with the proper planning, based on the information that, that we've gotten from the Bow Hunters Association and the Arkansas Game and Fish. But just a clarification, number one, on the, what the definition of a one-time and how far that can be expanded based on the way the voters voted on it.
Mr. Berry?
Well, hm, two, three issues. One, according to everybody I've talked to, the Game and Fish and the Arkansas Bow Hunters Association, a one-day hunt's not going to accomplish anything. I mean, it's, reminder, we're not even having it. Number two, I guess what I would like to do is, I don't know how we'd take a motion. I mean, we established a date. I don't know if we need a, a motion to remove the date.
Is canceled? We're still leaving it open?
I'd like to defer the, the date until later on. I'd like to defer the date for, to a time that would be established by a committee appointed by the mayor. It would consist of police officer, city council member, and citizen, you know, maybe a group of five, to establish some parameters in, in getting kind of a deer, you know, management committee together.
Yep. Is this to run concurrent with, with the hunt, or is this something totally separate?
No, this would be, that committee hopefully would establish with the input of the Arkansas Bow Hunters Association and the Game and Fish, number one, a date for, there'd be an appropriate date and time for an urban hunt in Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and whether or not, how we would end up getting the certification, if it would be in Eureka or if it'd be when. And by, have that established by a date, by March, so we can have that publicized, so the bow hunters know exactly what's going on, and we can have this thing brought back to the council in February for discussion, to establish a date and a time for these things to occur. There was something else, and I slipped my mind on it. So anyway, I guess the motion would be for this to be, this discussion would be deferred to a date to be determined by a committee appointed by the mayor. It would consist of five citizens, five people, one being a police officer, city council member, and three citizens. And I'm flexible with the number. I should pick five out of there, so. Doesn't need to be 20, because we know how that, that works, but anyway.
Good. Form of a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Excuse me. I'll read that back.
Okay.
I just, I could hear it coming. My understanding is that you want to defer the hunt, establish a group, five people?
Defer the hunt to a time that would be established.
To a date and time?
Or that would be recommended.
To be recommended?
Should be recommended.
Also have a group of five people to help develop a deer management, it will be a deer management committee comprised of someone from the police department, one council member, and three citizens, and move toward getting certification for the hunters and announcing a date in March. Could we divide the question?
I don't think we need the last sentence.
The, ex the March part?
No, we're, we repeat that, and I'll tell you when to roll.
The committee would recommend... I'm going to say the particulars. There would be certification, and a date would be established by March.
What, a date, a recommendation would be determined, the rules, wait a minute, all right. I propose-
Too difficult.
Make motions that we establish a committee.
Okay.
Consisting of a minimum of five people, one being a police officer, city council member, and citizens, to establish a future urban hunt with the rules and regulations to be proposed to the city council by the last meeting in February.
Now, that motion needs to be added to, to defer the date.
Right. At the very beginning, whatever I said at the very beginning was to defer the date.
Cancel the current hunt and defer.
Okay.
It would be to defer the date to a time established.
To be recommended.
To a time recommended, exactly.
Okay.
Stolen special.
Have the committee of five to establish a future urban hunt, to be announced at the last meeting in February. Yes?
Is that the whole motion?
Do you want the details on the committee of five?
Please read the, the motion. Please read the motion, the whole motion that we're voting on, that we want to vote on.
Mr. Berry would like to defer the deer hunt to a date and time to be recommended by a committee of five people, a deer management committee of five people, consisting of one policeman, one councilperson, and three citizens?
Appointed by the mayor.
The citizens will be appointed?
Well, yeah.
The police officer and the councilperson.
Somebody's got to, we'll have some volunteers, I'm sure.
The mayor usually does.
Appoint citizens?
Yeah, generally speaking.
Okay, appointed by the mayor?
Unless we, for real.
Or selected by the mayor.
Selected by the mayor. Are you going to make me read this again? Oh, boy. I'd really like to know what I'm voting on before I vote. I mean, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's just the way I am. I should not joke. Okay.
Just make it easier.
Mr. Berry wants, do you defer the deer hunt to a date and time to be recommended by a deer management committee of five people selected by the mayor, consisting of one policeman, one council member, and the citizens, and that committee of five will establish future urban hunt by certified hunters? And the announcement of the date will be at the last meeting in February.
That's close. We didn't have certified hunters in there, but... That's just part of the rules and regs.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I think we were still in the voting phase, and Ms. Bellas?
Discussion or voting?
It hasn't been seconded.
Yeah. Oh, a second.
Okay. Mr. Penna?
For, for those that have voiced their concerns, I think the thorough motion is, is well-taken, considers some of the concerns. I know that deer hunters do plan their vacations accordingly, and I think we would have really probably suffered a little bit too much, and I think based on the information that Mr. White was quoted, the regular bow hunting season in Arkansas is October 1st through the 28th, and urban hunts usually begin in September prior to the regular season, and I think this idea of having a committee to look into it, to follow hopefully the guidelines that the citizens voted on, but I'd also like to see us, if possible, in the meantime, to, to satisfy those, still the concerns of deer controls, and we look at some alternate method of deer control in the meantime, if that... I don't think we want people to think we're ignoring it until next December, because if we do, that's not going to be a very popular concept either.
Okay, that's about it.
We could let our dogs run loose for a while, and that'd chase deer kind of out.
Well, that takes care of item four under unfinished business.
I thought of that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Penna?
I make a motion that in the meantime, we look at alternative methods of deer control that don't involve a hunt, so that we aren't totally ignoring the problem until the committee comes up with something.
Motion made. Second? Need a second here?
I'll second for the second discussion.
Okay. Made and seconded. Discussion's open. Mr. Berry?
I think everybody got a copy of the guide to deer management developed areas of Pennsylvania that discusses a lot of those items in through here. Did anybody, did y'all get this?
I ran out of toner on my copy.
Okay. That, that adds a lot of things. Also, I'm not sure our city clerk can go back 12 years ago. Mr. Schrader, Mr. Bill Freeland were two of the council members at that time who looked into alternative methods of controlling the deer population. They ran into a rather lengthy and exhaustive research on this situation. Can't tell you right now, I also received, and I'll send it on to the other members, the article from Montana about tracking deer and then killing them, and that only cost about $30,000, so. But there's also, you know, birthing pro for deers, there's all sorts of other interesting items that Mr. Schrader came up with, or Schroder.
Schrader.
Schrader.
Sure, sure.
They're all expensive.
Yeah, anyway. So if the clerk, I don't know where those minutes are, but-
Look.
I'll give, at least that's a timeframe on who was on the council.
Okay. All right. Ms. Bellas?
I've heard of, of places, and they were probably more flat than this, and I don't know how you'd facilitate something like that around here, but I'd heard charming stories of large groups of people getting together with things to make noise and walking sort of in lines and, you know, chasing the deer out of town, so I don't know with the terrain around here, that might be quite a challenge, but I thought that was kind of cute and interesting. It'd be a really good community effort, too.
I've, I've tried that, and they move about 15 feet.
And then they come right back when you're gone. Running of the deer. The running of the deer.
Anybody else?
Tried running over it, too.
Okay, got a motion on the floor and a second to work on alternative methods of deer control. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll.
I don't, I can carry you.
I tried.
Yes, Mr. Idi.
So you're one of the yeses?
I'm the only one.
I'm missing two votes. Doc, what's your vote?
No.
Ken is yes, Doc is no.
No.
Which is no? So we're to three, our vote's yours.
Four no's.
Four no's. Thank you.
One, four, one.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, next on the agenda is dog control update.
Discuss.
Second?
Second.
No update. Still, still trying to get some priorities taken care of with the animal control officer and the citizens concerned.
Entertaining motion to postpone until next date?
Postpone until...
For a month?
10/6/2011.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Aye.
Uh, I have a request for the vacation palopinto for the planning commission, and Ms. Jen Grenell not be here. That was the one that was supposed to be postponed to 11/3/11. Okay, that moves us on to number six. Okay, that moves on to number six, nonconforming offerings assigned, postponed till code references are corrected.
Well, that's still in the process, as Ms. Mike Chip said, we're hopefully looking at early, late, late September.
So we leave it on the agenda and postpone until further notice. All right, next is number seven, update on alcohol tax, CAPC right to collect, I'll defer to Mr. Weaver and Ms. Armstrong. Oh, yeah, motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second?
All right. Floor's open.
We really haven't had time to work on it, Mr. Weaver and I need to get together and compare notes, Mr. Maloney from the CAPC has agreed to look in his A and P regs to help clarify what it is they're able legally to collect in the way of taxes, and that's really it for now, we'll keep moving on it.
Penna?
Move to postpone till October sixth meeting.
Second.
Made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, number eight, Operation Money Finance Department, postpone until today, new finance director or until new finance directors hired, Ms. Bellas, Dr. Kurt Becker. You want to postpone, or you want, we don't have a finance director yet, okay, until?
Eight and nine.
When?
Postpone until-
Next meeting, or further notice?
New finance director.
Okay, just to give you a little update, we did re-advertize for the director's job in, on Craigslist in the Den Gazette, we have one, first time I've ever heard of a video resume, which I can't get to work, so I emailed them back and told them to resubmit a paper on it, and that's, that's all we've got on that end so far. Okay.
Sir.
Yeah, let's postpone this until we have a new finance director.
Okay. Mr. Penna, you had your hand up?
That's okay, it wasn't mine, actually, I was going to make a recommendation, postpone the certain date.
All right.
Second. I need a second.
Okay, so, need a second on that one, I guess, I thought we had it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Number nine, new accounting software, same situation?
Move to discuss.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 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 move to discuss.
Move to discuss, okay.
Second.
Second, made and seconded?
Again, I'm sure if we go toward a new finance director, they would probably want to have some input on this, so I'd be real comfortable with letting them.
Postpone until?
So postpone it until our finance director.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Number ten, Walmart update, projection application postponed until October.
October twenty.
Motion to discuss?
Sumo.
Second.
Made and seconded? Still postponed?
So?
I have nothing.
Postpone it to a meeting date, or just leave it as October?
Says until October, there's no date mentioned, if you want to add a date to it, we can. So... I think the hearing is on the twelfth?
Six, meeting's on the fifteenth.
I'm not sure they have a second date.